I'd like to call this meeting of the Alabama Community College Board of Trustees in order. I welcome everyone to our regular meeting and appreciate your presence on this graduation week for most, if not all, of our institutions throughout the state of Alabama. It's a very happy occasion for many families throughout our state, and I know for all our presidents, staff, and for faculty. At this time, I'll recognize our interim president of Drake State Community College, Chris Lewis, who will give our indication.
Good morning. My theme verse that I use with my faculty-staff office as I've been at Drake has been one thing. And it's come from Ecclesiastes 7:12. "And Solomon, as we know, has been the smartest man ever walked this earth next to, of course, Jesus." And he shared with the fact that for the protection of knowledge, it's like the protection of money. And the advantage of wisdom is that it preserves the life of those who have it. And I share with my team all the time that we're in the life-saving business. And with that, let us pray. "O Lord, our God, how excellent is your name! Thank you for giving us one more day. Thank you for allowing us to be servants assisting with the educational attainment goals of your children. You told us after the floods with Noah that as long as the earth remained, there will always be seed, time, and harvest. Lord, allow us to continue to plant seeds whereupon completion our students may be in the position to harvest, harvest employment, harvest into a transfer that will further develop their skills, harvest their talents to contribute to the building of your kingdom." Lord, we thank you for our board of trustees, our chancellor, our presidents, faculty, staff, and all other administrators. We pray for all that are assembled in this room today. Let your will be done in today's meeting, and as this meeting comes to a conclusion, we pray for traveling grace and all the things we ask of thee. Amen.
Thank you, President Lewis. Everyone, please stand for pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
President?
President.
President. President. President. President. President. Thank you. All the board members received this agenda in advance and had a chance to review it. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Mr. Davis, or the second by Mr. Fan Troy. Any discussion or changes to the agenda? There being none, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Anyone opposed? The agenda is approved. Item five, approval of the minutes of the April 10th, 2018 meeting. Once again, the board members have received the minutes from the last meeting in advance, and we've had a chance to look that over, and at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Motion by Mr. McAnally, second by Mr. Woods. Any discussion or any changes to the minutes? There being none, we move to vote. All those in favor of approval of the minutes of the April 10th, 2018 meeting, raise your hand or voice vote likewise. Anyone opposed? The minutes are approved. Item six, public comment. Anyone signed up for public comment? Okay. Section seven, academic and student affairs, adult education, facilities, fiscal, information technology, and workforce development. Item seven, A1, is the Associate in Applied Science Certificate in Computer and Information Sciences at Shelton State Community College. This is an amended item from the last meeting that we approved, and it needed to be updated. At this time, I'll entertain a motion on item Shelton State. A motion by Mr. Davis, is there a second? Second by Mr. Woods. Any discussion or questions? Once again, this is an amended item on the Associate in Applied Science Certificate in Computer and Information Sciences at Shelton State. All those in favor signify by raising your hand or saying aye. Anyone opposed? Motion's approved. Item seven, A2, is automotive technology building renovation at Shelton State Community This was presented at our work session last month. At this time, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Woods, is there a second? Second by Ms. Brown. There being none, all those in favor of the automotive technology building renovation at Shelton State Community College, raise your hand or signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, A3, Culinary Arch Facility at Wallace State Community College, Hansel. Once again, this was presented at last month's work session. At this time, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Ms. Brown, is there a second? Second by Mr. Davis. Any discussion? There being none, we move to vote. All those in favor of approving the Culinary Arch Facility at Wallace State Community College, Hansel, please signify by raising your hand or saying aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, A4, construction project at John C. Calhoun Community College. Chancellor, does anyone want to speak on this? If you would.
This project was approved last year by the board, but the original budget was $6.9 million. We come today to request an amended approval of both extending the timeline for execution of construction contracts, and also to move the budget from $6.9 million to $9.6 million.
And I might add that the final approval of documents in the federal grant is...
Yes, this doesn't point out that it's more than $1 million grant, but it's now a sliver.
Mr. Watley, of this increase to over $9 million, what part of that is enhancements to the project or additions from the original project?
We've identified about $1 million in scope enhancements were added to the project since it was originally considered a remaining budget increase due to market conditions. We added that $1 million. About half a million in increased equipment that had been provided for facility, and another half million in capital resources.
Rest is the increase.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. Watley? At this time, I'll entertain a motion on the construction project for the Automotive Technology Building at Calhoun Community College. Motion by Ms. Brown, is there a second? Second by Mr. Davis. Any discussion? Any further discussion on this project? There being none, we move to vote. All those in favor of approving the construction project on the Automotive Technology Building at Calhoun Community College, signify by saying aye or raising your hand. Motion carries. Okay. Item seven, A5, construction renovation project bond issuance and implementation of special building fee against the state community college.
Similar to previous item, this item was considered approved last year by the board, but had an authorization expiration date of March 31st of this year. We should bid the last three projects that this item approved, we should bid those next week, and so we simply requesting to extend the authorization timeline through August 1st this year to execute all the construction plans.
We're still, it looks like we're staying within the initial budget on this one?
I'll be able to answer that question better in a week and a half. I hate to venture into this one.
Any other questions for Mr. Watley? At this time, I'll entertain a motion. A motion by Mr. Woods, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McAnally. Any discussion, further questions or comments? There being none, we move to vote. All those in favor of construction and renovation projects, bond issue and implementation of special building fee against the state community college, signify, if you're in favor of that, signify by raising your hand or saying aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item, section eight, executive legal and public information. A1 is lease agreement with Redstone Federal Credit Union of Calhoun Community College. This was on our work session last month. At this time, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Davis, second by Ms. Brown. Any discussion? Seeing none, we move to vote. Once again, this is lease agreement between Redstone Federal Credit Union and Calhoun Community College. All those in favor signify by raising your hand or saying aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, A2, is the sale of real property by Wallace Community College Dothan. This was on the work session last month. Good presentation from the institution. At this time, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Woods, is there a second? Second by Ms. Brown. Any discussion? Comments? Once again, we have in front of us the sale of real property by Wallace Community College Dothan. All those in favor signify by raising your hand or saying aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, A3, this is the ERP or Enterprise Resource Planning Agreement for the Alabama Community College System. This was presented at the work session, March, our March work session, I believe. So we've had the presentation on this. At this time, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. McAnally, is there a second? Second by Mr. Davis. Any discussion? Appreciate all your work, Mr. McAnally, and all that of the finance and audit committee. Just excellent work, and excellent work by the chancellor's staff.
And I think we need to acknowledge excellent work by many of the people out in the schools, who participated in the various committees, and spent a awful lot of hard work and put this together. Just appreciate all of your hard work.
Absolutely, Chancellor. All those involved, just know you have the appreciation of the entire board. We know it was a lot of hard work, and you worked diligently, and we appreciate it very much. Anything else from the board? There being none, we move to vote. All those in favor of the Enterprise Resource Planning Agreement for the Alabama Community College System, please raise your hand or signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, A4, tuition rate adjustment for the Alabama Community College System.
Chairman, board members, as we move forward in making significant changes and looking to the future for the community college system, there are a number of things we need to address. Safety, technology, facilities. I dream of the day when you can walk on our campus to any of our schools and sit in any of our facilities and feel comfortable that you are at the base. We have a lot of people working hard toward that goal, but it takes money to do it. So I'm recommending that we proceed with setting tuition with a $10 increase that will be applied to the school and to the system as a whole. That we can not just be adequate, but I'm anxious for this system to be leading the country and is doing the things that we need to be doing. So it's with that that I want to make the recommendation. It's also, just I might note, it will still put us at less than half cost per credit hour as compared to our four-year sisters and brothers. In addition to that, if you consider the federal funds, it will put us the third lowest in the South East. So we still are at a low cost factor and attractive funding. It's not a huge amount of money, but it will make a difference in managing other schools.
Questions from board, comments? We have the force of recommendation from the chancellor of proposing a $10 per credit hour tuition increase, beginning with Fall 18 semester. At this time, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Davis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fan Troy. Any other discussion? There being none, we move to vote. All those in favor of the Alabama Community College, the college having a $10 per credit hour tuition increase, beginning with the Fall 18 semester, signify by raising your hand or saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Section nine, personnel.
Particularly the last, I'm sure particularly the last, I was going to introduce Kimberly, and then I see her sitting back in the corner. She wasn't present, and I just wanted to introduce her to the... She comes with a lot of credentials, and she's involved with working with us in the community council. Veterans and figures, and it's a part that we don't spend a lot of time on, but it's a significant problem to work with veterans. So we're glad to have you on the board. At the last board meeting, the board acted with the name as permanent president at North West Schultz. At that particular time, our recommended president was in Washington DC speaking on behalf of the community college system in support of Pell Grants. So I'd like to introduce Linda Collogras today, so most of y'all already knew her, but she has assumed the role as permanent president and is dealing with a lot of issues, but as we all knew she would be capable of it, she's managing it very well. Linda, I'd like to...
Thank you, Chancellor Baker. Chancellor Baker and members of the board of trustees, I want to thank you so much for naming me as president of Northwest Schultz in last month's meeting in obscenity. I'll explain that a little bit in a minute, but I also especially want to thank you for the last five years of integrating institutions in our system as interim president. I got a good practice field before I started as president, so not many people get that, and I know that that prepared me well for what we're doing now, so I appreciate that so much. But last month, at last month's meeting, I had been given the opportunity to go to Washington DC and present at the official congressional briefing for summer Pell Grants. They had, the appropriations committee had placed it in the budget and it has stayed there, so our students got them one summer a long time ago and never got them again, so we want them to stay this time, since they put them in for this summer. So as part of that, they did an official briefing for Congress, and so I was one of three administrators from across the United States that was allowed to speak at that briefing on behalf of all colleges and universities, but most of all, on behalf of the Alabama Community College System. So I thought that was a huge deal to be able to do that, so being able to get summer Pell Grants will do a lot of things for our students. First of all, it'll give them more incentive to be able, for us to be able to retain them. We did a lot of statistics. A lot of us were in advocacy group the week before, a lot from the system office for us, and several others were in it. And we, as part of that, looked at some statistics. We typically lose half of our students that are on full Pell Grant once they have to drop out for the summer and then come back for Fall. And that's just, that's ridiculous. So we convinced the congressman that we talked to up there anyway, we think we did, that it's better to retain them. It's not going to cost you anymore to retain them and let's get them finished than to lose half every time you stop them out for summer. So it stayed in the budget, and that's a good thing for all of us. It also allows us to get students finished with college faster and faster into the workforce, which is what we're all about. So that's why I missed last month's meeting, and sorry about that, but it was a great time and it was a great opportunity for everybody that was there to experience that. So back to thanking you for what you've given me to do. As Chancellor Baker said, we did have some issues at the college, pretty major issues, but we've had lots of assistance. I have a great team at the college of colleagues that are ready and willing to help me, and they're doing everything they can to help. Every day, we work as a team to do what we need to do. But we also had a great team here at the system office. This was truly acting as a system when we have approached this, these issues that we're facing. And so I can't thank Donna, Taylor, and Akeem enough. They've spent as many hours as we have here at the system office and on-site with me at Northwest Schultz helping me, so I really appreciate that. Appreciate Roger and Tracy for all their assistance in the beginning. When I first got back, there were lots of issues. We spent lots of days together, and so I appreciate that. That helped a lot to get things straightened down a little bit, to get on the road to trying to review the rest of the stuff, so we could really do the work. So I want to thank all those. I also like to thank my husband. I have him here with me today, John. About five years ago, he retired from Calhoun Community College. He thought he retired, and a few months later, I called him one day from school and said, "Hey, do you want to go to the other end of the state?" Or six months as interim president? And I said, "This is a great opportunity for me." He didn't hesitate to say, "Sure, I'll go," but he spent the next four and a half years in an apartment, in an apartment down there, cooking dinner for us and doing laundry. It was great. It was great for him, and then he allowed me to be president of Southern Union, so I appreciate him for that. And then when we were selected to go home to Northwest Schultz to clean up some problems, he was okay with that too, so thank you so much for all your support. But again, what we do every day in the colleges, all of us in this room know that we have careers where, I was going to say change lives, and then Chris said save lives, so that sounds even better. We change lives and we save lives. And the graduations that have taken place, ours is tomorrow night. If any of you are president at those, you can see real evidence and real examples of the lives that we've changed and the lives that we've saved, so if you get a chance to do that, that makes it all worthwhile. I myself was a first-generation college student, went to school on full Pell and an academic scholarship, so I know I was a life exchange of education. So thank you so much again for allowing me this opportunity to serve Northwest Schultz.
Thank you.
I saw Jim in here. We're frisked. You hiding?
I can't see him.
Jim is leaving us to go to Maryland?
Yes, sir.
And we regret that. But it's our job to go on and do the things we need to do at Calhoun. We wish you the best. We appreciate it what you've done while you were here, and we look forward to checking up on you when you're in Maryland.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. I'm looking for Joe. Where's Joe? Do you stand, Joe? I've already given the board members a resume on Joe. So officially, beginning Monday, Joe will serve as acting president. But Jim, retirement soon. I don't, not retirement, we don't give a resignation until effective at the end of the month. After that, Joe will serve as interim. Joe's been a longtime community college employee in our system at Northeast. David Campbell says he's a good guy, and I take David Campbell's word. I believe he is. I've known him for a good long while, know his family, and we're excited about having him go and fill in as we pursue the process and follow the process by and by our good pleasure. Thank you a lot. I do have, I'll begin. I've asked you, if you will, to kind of briefly talk about two or three projects that we're working on. Sometimes we spend so much time talking about the process. We actually are involved in the education business, and we try to stay focused on it any time, so if you will, if you could.
Thank you, Chancellor Baker. Mr. Thompson, members of the board, I actually have five very quick updates for you. The first one, as you know, our current strategic plan goes from 2016 to 2018, and we're in the process of creating the process for developing the new plan. So this summer, Chancellor Baker is going to host regional meetings with small groups of college presidents to gather their feedback and input on the initiatives that we're currently working on, as well as identifying any potential initiatives and work that would be critical to the success of the system moving forward. So we'll be working on that with the chancellor and the presidents and other groups throughout the state this summer and forward, and we'll continue to give you updates. The next set of updates I want to provide for you are categorized, the first two in terms of resources that the system office has been providing and working with our colleges. First, I wanted to highlight the Roughlow Noel Levitz Initiative that we're undertaking. They're a nationally renowned consulting group that works with strategic enrollment management, among other potentials to engage institutions. What we're focusing on with Roughlow Noel Levitz is a pilot program where we've identified four to six of our colleges that are in need of or asking for significant help in developing a strategic enrollment plan. And we've worked with Noel Levitz to create a proposal. We have three colleges currently that have volunteered, and we've reached out to a couple of more institutions to look at their interest in participating in this. And what we're really hoping in terms of engaging this firm is they're very good at identifying students from the very first identification process to get them enrolled, as well as that engagement process through graduation and after graduation. So really trying to identify those resources that we continue to provide our colleges so that they can be even better at serving their students and their communities. The second one I wanted to highlight, you have a general idea, but wanted to share with you that Brian Helms, Sarah Calhoun, and Tony Holland from the system office, over the last two months, have visited each one of our institutions across the state, as well as Alabama Technology Network, and provided them information on a financial status update, and full-time staffing reports, as well as course completion information, and engaged the presidents and their leadership teams in dialogue around those three critical components of kind of what helps us be successful to further building that unified collaborative system and providing the resources and information for colleges to be successful. The last two updates I want to provide you, I'm going to actually give you a little bit more detail on, because these have the potential of providing a significant direct impact to our students. The first one I want to highlight is the FAFSA completion project. And FAFSA, just to reiterate, is the free application for federal student aid that students must complete, and Dr. Collogras referenced it a little bit, when she talked about the importance of Pell to our students and to our system in Alabama. But with a partnership with ACCS and the Alabama Commission for Higher Education, as well as our colleges, and I really want to commend... as our colleges, and I really want to commend our financial aid directors at our colleges for the important role that they played in this process. Why this initiative is important is that students, in order for them to qualify for Pell, any financial aid, and many grants, they have to complete the FAFSA. So in 2016 and 2017, forty-four percent of those students who were graduating high school, or approximately 12,000 high school students, did not complete the FAFSA, which if you looked and you did the math of the typical number or proportion of those students that would be eligible for Pell, those 12,000 students, if they would attend to higher ed, basically left approximately $45 million unclaimed and on the table that could have been used to support their educational initiatives. What we've done to date around that initiative is AIC provided or created an online, uh, tool to help students in local high schools complete the FAFSA. The Alabama Community College System, along with their colleges and those financial aid directors, conducted more than 25 sessions for high school counselors and career coaches on how to use that tool. And what we've got, what, what's been accomplished so far to date is that more than 500 high school counselors and career coaches have been trained. Alabama has moved from 43 to 35 on the national rankings for the states that, um, in terms of their completion percentage of the FAFSA, and more than 1,450 FAFSA's have been completed from this point in time this year compared to last year, which has the potential, again, if those students were to come and participate in higher ed, could be approximately $3.2 million of Pell Grants and aid for those students to come and attend, um, higher education in Alabama. So that's one of the greatest success initiatives thus far, and we'll continue to monitor and continue to work with our schools to help, um, even more students complete the FAFSA. The other item I want to highlight is one that we briefly referenced to you before, and that's around the Open Educational Resources Project. Again, we've partnered with, um, the Alabama Commission for Higher Education, and oftentimes here is this OER, Open Educational Resources, and that's to look at using either free or creating, um, educational resources as opposed to textbooks, uh, because of the cost of textbooks, um, which can oftentimes be a deterrent for students that successfully engage and participate in higher ed. And the college board estimates that over $1,400 is the cost for textbooks for a student to go full-time. So what we're looking for are ways to help mitigate or eliminate those costs as much as possible. What we've done to date so far is we've had four regional full-day OER workshops, where we've trained more than 115 faculty members and ACCS administrators in what OER is and the potential for that. In addition, we worked with the Alabama Commission for Higher Education to create a grant process of, um, a pool of about $50,000. We, we released last week an RFP, which detailed, um, an opportunity for faculty members to apply for this grant to create OER, uh, resources for their classes. Because in order for this to work, we need to support the faculty in identifying and developing those, um, resources for their students and to help mitigate those costs. Any questions?
Well, in regards to the FAFSA, uh, we're 35, which is still not good. What's the number one ranking states are doing? Have you looked at their processes and programs?
Yeah, uh, so this piece of working with AIC and creating the online tool is one of those best practices that we've monitored. And it really is, and working with the high schools, creating that awareness and linking our, um, high school, um, counselors, administrators, parents, and everyone with our community colleges and, and knowing that, and getting in those high schools and helping with that. That is one of the key pieces that, um, others have done to be successful, and we're continuing to monitor that and push this as an opportunity.
We should, I'm, uh, yeah, I've been around. Jeff and I and our HR department, we've been working toward bringing someone on board, and we're pretty close to having that lineup, whose total mission is working with career coaches and high school principals and counselors, to try to begin to get the, the information down to where it's, where it's needed and important. And, uh, you know, we, we spend a lot of money, how much do we spend on career coaches? How many do we have?
It's over $600,000.
So, but we want to know what's happening. We want to know what they're doing and what they're, what they need to be doing. And we need to develop a more organized approach of how we deal with local KQ2 programs. And we're, we're going to just focus somewhere on that.
I brought the push that you talked about, the move to support 33 to 35. That's continuing at the same pace, same effort into sometime into the future, or what is the plan?
Absolutely. We have to continue this and continue that awareness, because it can't be just kind of a one and done, because you have you to turn over the forgetfulness of a new group of students and parents. And it's important that we, um, keep this as a, a strong campaign, because it, as you know, with our strategic plan, one of our key goals is that access and affordability. And this is one of those pieces where we have initiatives around to continue that, um, education and helping them understand what the process is.
It's been talking for three years. Well, I, I just kind of want to add another statement that is telling you that we have his, his, can you have him have, can you kind of give us a quick little report on our academy process?
Uh, it's, you're aware, uh, Tony Holland joined the system office, and he's, uh, creating the Instructional Leadership Academy. And that's one of the pieces when, um, Brian, Sarah, and Tony went out to the, um, colleges, and they talked about, uh, where we were with a lot of our, uh, course completion efforts. Uh, there's, um, five specific strategies that he employed when he was at, while was still then. And one of the things that we wanted to do is provide that as, um, professional develop for, development for our faculty across the state. And that's actually kicking off later this month. And I was talking with, uh, Mr. Lewis earlier, President of Drake, and he actually said he's having all of his full-time faculty participate, um, in that initiative. And I don't have, um, specific numbers or updates on other colleges' participation, but I do know we have, um, a couple of hundred that are starting. And just like the FAFSA, this isn't one of those kind of one and done. We want to provide this professional development for all of our faculty. Again, it's about how do we get better at what we're already doing and servicing our students so that they can be successful.
I think Dr. James Mitchell, maybe he's here. You've just had one session, haven't you?
Yes. Yes, we are, we are also one of those colleges in which all of our full-time faculty will be going through the, uh, Instructional Leadership Academy. Uh, that's something I mentioned to the chancellor earlier. It's something we truly need, and it's going to be very valuable and, and worthwhile, and our students will be the beneficiaries of it. So we are very happy to be a part of it, and we'll make sure that it's successful.
I just, these things are happening all the time, and I, I just want to make a point. Everything this board has done today is going to make a huge difference in how we move forward. And our goal to go is to get totally focused on student services and that's what it's all about. It's not about keeping books, it's not about this, that, and the other. All of that has to be done. We want to make that secondary to the importance of teaching the students. Thank you.
Thank you, Chancellor. Uh, we, we have special recognition right now for, uh, the, uh, men's and women's basketball teams that have won their respective conferences in the state and the national player of the year here in the state. And at this time, I'll recognize Dean Myrick, who is commissioner of the Athletic Association of the Community College System.
Good morning. First, thank you to the board and Chancellor Baker for allowing us to honor just a few of our teams and individual accomplishments in the Alabama Community College Conference, uh, this year. Uh, before I introduce today's guest, I just want to share some general information on the conference. Uh, we are governed by the National Junior College Athletic Association, which is the two-year equivalent of the NJCAA. Uh, now, the NJCAA currently consists of 511 members and over 55,000 student athletes. We, as a conference, uh, currently consist of 21 members. We have 102 teams participating in 11 sports and approximately 2,000 student athletes and have won 20 national championships. More importantly, in 2016-17, the conference had a record, 235 student athletes received NJCAA academic honors by earning a 3.6 GPA or higher. And in addition to the individual accomplishments, we had 29 teams named NJCAA All Academic Teams by earning a team GPA of over 3.0. We are very fortunate to have great student athletes on and off the court and on the field. And as you will hear shortly, we have presidents and coaches who push our student athletes to be the best that they can be. Being a numbers guy, I find the following fascinating. During the 2016-17 year, we streamed live a game of the week. We featured two teams, um, and we streamed those live online, as well as all of our postseason tournaments. Uh, during last year, we had over 158,000 unique viewers view those games and tournaments, including 78,900 viewers watch our baseball tournament. Those numbers are on pace, uh, for the same this year. But today, we're here to recognize our conference men's and women's basketball champions, as well as a standout women's basketball student athlete. And at this time, I'll introduce President Robert Exley of Sneed State.
Uh, he failed to mention that twice during this year, our men's basketball team was featured on ESPN Plays of the Day, and with a couple of incredible dunks. Uh, our head coach is Jeremiah Patterson. Uh, Jeremiah came to us as an assistant coach a few years ago. One of the challenges for many two-year colleges, especially for Sneed State, is we cannot afford full-time coaches. So Jeremiah is a full-time employee of, of the Boaz School District. He teaches every day. He works extremely hard. When we went to the national tournament, we had the, uh, the privilege of facing probably the Villanova of two-year college basketball in our first game, Southern Idaho, which averaged 107 points a game. Uh, we played hard at one point. Uh, I think there were seven consecutive three-pointers made back and forth in possessions, and Jeremiah, I don't think that total time was more than about 40 seconds. It was pretty amazing. The thing I'm most proud of, though, was following our loss to Southern Idaho. The next day, as, as our players continued to enjoy the tournament, one of our basketball players, who's just an amazing twin, was about, what, 6'6", 6'7"? We had this great picture of him holding a little girl and having a blast. Jeremiah received an email from that cheerleading coach from Southern Idaho saying, "I've never in my life seen someone who connected so much with my daughter and exemplifies a true student athlete you want to see." And so in spite of losing the game and losing fairly handedly, our guys demonstrated what we want from student athletes. As Dean has mentioned, we take great pride in the conference at Sneed State and the academic accomplishments. For the fall term, I think your, your cumulative GPA for the men's basketball team was 2.96. And so we have folks that work hard, and I'm very, very delighted to introduce to you our head basketball coach. For me, it's Jeremiah Patterson. Has a couple of comments.
A lot to thank you guys for, for having us here today and letting me speak. Like to thank Alabama Community College System for all they do for athletics. If not for athletics, uh, there are guys on our team that would not be in college right now. All of those guys have, have overcome many obstacles in life, and they are all on pace to graduate from our school even this year, if they're sophomores, or next year if they're freshmen. Uh, our team did win the conference this year, but it wasn't the wins on the court that made that team special. They did many things throughout the community. Uh, as Dr. Exley said, I teach school, at an elementary school, second and third grade. We do a community service project every year where those guys come in and greet our kids at our school every Friday. Those guys enjoyed it more than the kids did. They did an outstanding job. I had so many compliments from our teachers and our principal about what a great job they did. I also have two, for sure, academic All-Americans on my team this season. We may have more, uh, after the grades come in. One of those students had a 4.0, so he will be a first-team academic All-American, and he also won the English award for the outstanding English student at our school. As he said, our, our overall GPA the first semester was a 2.96. It's probably going to be higher this next semester, but that is the highest GPA our s, our team has had in several years. I've only been the coach for two years as the head coach, but from the information I've been given, that's the highest GPA we've had in several years. So those guys are doing stuff off the court that's even more important than what they're doing on the court. Several times this season, I've had faculty, staff, employees around the school, and also members of the community stop me and tell me how, how good our students have been in the classroom, when, when they're seen in the community, just so many kind words coming. And I think that's what made us more special than the season that we had. Um, we did have a great season, uh, first time that Sneed State had won the men's basketball tournament in 28 seasons. And like I said, I think a lot of that translates from the kind of guys that these guys were to on the court. Uh, we, we went 15-2 overall in our conference, and we won our finals beating Coastal Alabama North. We did run into a very good team at the national tournament. They finished second place overall. I think they lost the finals by three. But overall, it was a great trip for our guys. It was a great experience. We got to go out to, to see a part of the country that most of our guys would never see. Uh, it was great to come back home to Alabama, though, after going to Kansas. We did do as well as we wanted to, like I said, but it was a great experience. Lots of, lots of, uh, attention for our guys. We got another kid that made SportsCenter at the national tournament, but also the, the amount of recruiting attention our kids received while they were there because of all the four-year coaches that were there. But again, thanks for having me here today, and our, our team was, like I said, special. Our community really embraced our team this season. They, we had the largest crowds that I've seen at Sneed State in years, and I know that a lot of that comes with winning games, but it also comes from the community actually knowing our guys and getting, getting, become a part of their lives and wanting to see them succeed. So we had great crowds at home, and we had great crowds on the road. We had people actually drove to Kansas to watch us play that wasn't even related to the players on the team. So again, thanks for what you do, and, uh, you've changed the lives of so many people in athletics for what you guys let us do.
Thank y'all very much. We're really proud of, uh, our coach tonight. I'd like to appreciate a little round of applause for what he did.[1667.82][1667.82](applause)
Now I'd like to introduce President Bill Ashley of Shelter State.
Chancellor, Board of Trustees, thank you for the opportunity here. I'd like to let you know I brought some of our leaders from Shelter State today. I'd like to first recognize Ms. Kara Crossland. Kara's in her second year working at Shelter State as our athletic support specialist at first, and in January she was promoted to being the athletic director. We look forward to her continued leadership. And also supporting our women's basketball coach is Coach Chris Sanford. He's been at Shelter State for 17 years, and he helps with all aspects of the program, as well as the sports information department. Thank you, guys. Of course, we look forward to their leadership going forward. Uh, Kara Crossland is in her, excuse me. Coach Madonna Thompson is our women's head basketball coach, and she is in her 20th year here at Shelter State, uh, community college. She boasts an overall record of 551 and 127, which is an 81.2% winning percentage. She's led the program to 18 consecutive 20-win seasons, with 10 of those eclipsing the 30-win mark. Her lady Bucks won the Alabama Junior Community College Conference Division II Championship both in 2000, 2002, little runners-up in 2003 and 2004. The 2010 advanced to NJCAA Final Four, finishing fourth in the nation. After restructuring the conference, the lady Bucks went on to win the Alabama Community College Conference Championship in 2006, '07, '08, '09, '10, '12, '13, '14, '16, '17, and this past year, '18. And they were finished, uh, in 2005 as the runner-up. Just this past season, the 2018 team had a record of 36-1, and this is Baker's season one, and ended the regular season ranked number-one in the nation in NJCAA polls. The team advanced the NJCAA Final Four again this year. This is the third consecutive year the program reaches the Final Four. We finished the tournament this year ranked three in the country, finished the other tournament number-three. Coach Thompson not only has won numerous Coach of the Year awards, but also two of her elite Hock Sportsmanship Awards, and she has sent ninety players on with four-year institutions at every level to continue their education and their playing careers. I think that's fascinating. A native of Collinwood, Tennessee, Coach Thompson played for Coach Rick Moody at the University of Alabama from nineteen ninety-two to nineteen ninety-five. I was a member of the nineteen ninety-four NCAA Final Four team, along with Coach Kara Crossland, I might add. Coach Thompson earned a Master of Science at the University of Alabama in speech pathology, and of course, she's from Collinwood, Tennessee. And last year, they put signs on either end of the town to let them know and everybody else know that she is from Collinwood, Tennessee. And of course, I'd like to introduce Coach Madonna Thompson to the podium, and I'll let her introduce Sierra. With some applause, please, let's invite her to the podium.
I'd like to thank the board for inviting us here today. This is a great honor for us. We had a very successful year, once again, probably the most successful all-around year that we have had at Shelton. This team did finish thirty-six and one, but probably the most impressive thing is that this class of sophomores that is leaving finished seventy and four. This team's only been beat four times, which is pretty remarkable if you follow college With this group, something we have not mentioned, you know, talk about their on-the-court success, but this past Friday, all six of our players walked across the stage at Shelton State with their associate's degree. That is something we hold very high and very important, and it is something that we push on all of our kids to actually receive their associate's degree. Of the six kids that graduated, all six have received full basketball scholarships to play at four-year schools. Five of the six are at Division One programs. We've got Sierra, who will be playing at the University of Alabama. I've had two sign with the Old Dominion University, including a four-point-oh student who is in pre-dentistry, following her dad's footsteps to be a dentist. I had one kid sign with the University of Hawaii, which was a new one. We've never seen anyone quite that far from Alabama. We had one sign with Norfolk State University, and then we had one sign with Delta State University. We're very proud of all of these kids. I would like to say our team this year was made up of all Alabama kids except for two, which I don't know if any of you ever follow and look at the rosters when you go to the national tournament, but we're competing against kids from all over the nation. We're competing against international students, and we've managed to win year after year with at least probably eighty percent of our players being from the state of Alabama. And the only reason we had the two out-of-state kids this year from the university, from Florida, is because their head coach played basketball for me probably about twelve years ago. So, so, you know, I'm just very proud that we've been able to find the kids within this state and be that successful. Now, this kid over here to my right is the most successful women's basketball player that we've ever had at Shelton State, and probably the most successful we've ever had come through the community college system in Alabama. She is the two-time MVP of the conference tournament. She is the two-time ACCC Player of the Year. She's two-time All-Tournament Team at the national tournament. She was MVP of the two thousand eighteen NJCAA tournament. She broke the all-time single scoring record for a game in the national tournament by scoring forty-seven, and I took her out with three and a half minutes left. She holds the all-time most points scored in the national tournament with a tournament record of a hundred and twenty-seven points. She led the nation in total points scored this year, scoring seven hundred and ninety-three. She leaves Shelton State with the all-time most points scored with one thousand four hundred and twenty-six points scored in two years. Her jersey is currently hanging in the Women's Basketball Hall of Fame in Knoxville, Tennessee, which recognizes the top players from each level of play, NJCAA, NCAA, Division One, Two, and Three every year. So if you go there right now, you'll see number-two with Shelton State hanging from the rafters. The biggest award that she has received is she was named the NJCAA Player of the Year for the entire nation. I think there are over two hundred women's basketball teams competing in Division One. So do the numbers, probably ten to fifteen kids per team. It all boiled down, this is the top player in the United States. She was another one that graduated on Friday and walked across the stage, and she has signed to play at the University of Alabama, which Kara and I are extremely happy with her signing with our alma mater, and will be able to go and watch her play next year. And she's got a few words that she would like to say, but before I turn it over to her, I'd just like to say, if there is a kid, I'm gonna get... that the junior college system has worked, it's that one. I couldn't stand that kid. First month we were together, we butted heads every day over everything. And she has matured more than any person I've ever been associated with in twenty years. A kid that I never thought would graduate. A kid that I didn't think I would make two years with. But slowly over time, I improved as a coach, and she improved as a student athlete. And day by day, we fought, and slowly our battles got smaller and fewer in between. And this kid is an absolute, probably one of the best products we've ever put out there, and is an example of a kid that the junior college system and athletics has worked for, because if she had not come through this program, I don't really know where Sierra would be today. But she's done everything that she's supposed to do, and we cannot wait to see her at the University of Alabama. Sierra?
I just wanted to say I'm truly honored to be here today to speak in front of you. I wanted to thank Shelton State. Shelton State took me in when I did not qualify for Alabama and molded me into the player I am today. Thank you to Madonna and Coach Chris for being hard on me and despite the adversity. I remember, I remember when we was the number-two seed, we played Gulf Coast State, and it was around second quarter, and I dove for the ball, and I chipped my both front teeth. And at that moment, I knew that I was willing to do anything and everything to secure the number-one spot for my team and my coaches. But beyond basketball, beyond basketball at Shelton State and being first in the nation to finish third in the national tournament, Kara and Jessica were there for many classrooms. Kara is our athletic director at Shelton State. She's hardworking, and her efforts behind the scenes have expanded Shelton State athletics' fan base and media support more than ever. She's constantly looking for things to improve to make Shelton State a powerhouse of junior college sports. Excuse me. Lastly, I would like to thank our President Bill Ashley for his undying support to all of Shelton State athletics and his hard work and dedication to Shelton State program. Without these wonderful individuals who is the foundation of not only Shelton State, but my growth in women's basketball and academics, I would not be here today, nor would I be able to further my career at the University of Alabama. With that being said, thank you all, and thank you again for having me today.
Again, Board of Trustees, thank you for your support. It takes a lot to run an athletic program, and of course, I've been there seven months now, and I know steel sharpened steel, and I know men sharpen men and women sharpen women. And there's no finer group of leaders in this athletic department at Shelton State than these people that we brought. I know we've had other coaches in other seasons that are going on. And of course, it's been a wonderful joy for me, being a new president, to learn the culture of Shelton State, and learn out what's good, and of course, we're going to work on the other part, too. At the same time, though, I found folks that are there in leadership positions, and again, it's a team sport, and all our colleges and all our campuses have got to have the strong, strong people to step up and take leadership roles. And of course, it's been a wonderful opportunity here. And I do thank you for our opportunity to speak, and thank you for what you do for Alabama Community Colleges across the state. Thank you very much.
And quickly, I will add, having seen Sierra play many times over the last couple of years, she is the most exciting and talented player, male or female, that I have seen in a long, long time, and we wish her the best of luck her next few years. In closing, I would like to thank the board and Chancellor Baker, but all our presidents here who have athletics for all of their support of the conference and our teams and our coaches and our student athletes. And if you're in the Ozark area tomorrow through next Wednesday, stop by Historic Eagle Stadium, there's our baseball tournament tomorrow. We'd love to have you there. And it's a great event and a great experience. So with that, thank you very much, and we hope to see you soon with other teams.
I know I speak for the entire board in commending the presidents, but especially the coaches, their staff, the athletic directors, and the athletic programs that were highlighted here, but throughout our state. You all play such a key role in student development. It's, I've had family that played at Coastal formerly Fallmer, and it really helps the students so very, very much, and I don't think it can be overemphasized. Thank you for what you do, and a special recognition to Sierra Johnson, that was just outstanding. Thank you for being here. It's our honor to have you here. And Coach Thompson, Coach Patterson, y'all just done a great job. Thank you so much for that. Did any of the board members have anything else to add? Just a moment, of course. Chancellor, do you have anything else? Board members, do y'all have any objection to us going straight into work session, or do y'all need a break? Anything else? At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
All those in favor say a, we stand adjourned, and we'll go into work session.